Health and Safety Briefing, we're not expecting a fire alarm. If the fire alarm does go to leave the building through the front and collect at the front, alternative exit is up through the mayor's parlour up there. Thank you.
Okay, can we welcome our new member, councillor James Owen? Everyone would like to welcome him. Thank you. Just a quick reminder before we start, it's Remembrance Day on Sunday and anyone coming, I hope lots of people do come because it's a really important day for us to be there. And it's meeting 10.30 here to do the march down to the parks Sunday. The only other thing I want to remind people, I noticed Corrie's asked for help with the tree handing out this Saturday and next Wednesday. I can't do that this time, so I don't know if anyone's got any time at all to to help. It does get a bit hectic at times trying to sort all the trees out. And with not further ado, we go on to... Apologies on... Public session. Are there members of, I think there are members of the public who want to speak. Perhaps you'd like to come here and use Henry's microphone.
Oh, thank you. Good evening. My name is Alan Davis. I had to look down to see that. And for those who don't know me, I was a councillor here a few years ago. I am presenting this proposal with Paul Trimby over there. The BBC recently called car parks the hottest space in solar power. And we are putting a proposal before you to install solar canopies in central car park, which we hope you will consider seriously. You own the central car park and you have the capital. And this is an opportunity to make an investment from the capital that will bring the council both a good return and also, we think, a fair amount of goodwill and interest, because people need to see local action on the climate front and some will benefit directly from this. The returns from this proposal depend on who you sell the electricity to. You can sell it to the grid for the lowest return on your investment. Or you can sell it ideally to locally owned businesses and households, which could give them a better rate for their electricity and also bring a better return for the council. We have included an item about Leicester's Newark Street car park, but you will find this is an idea that is being picked up widely, which is good for the risk averse as the experimentation phase is over and there's plenty of information and help available for this council. We believe this investment would be appreciated and supportive. It would provide a model for others to follow, which is important. And of course, the panels will provide shade and shelter in a warming climate. Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
We're not able to discuss this fully at this meeting. So we'll ask that the clerk puts it on the agenda for the next available meeting. And it might be good if we can try and invite you as well to to help us out with that. Because I think it's something we've been interested in the past. But I think there are some issues around us being able to actually sell it to companies without linking ourselves in with a, you know, community company. So, you know, we can talk through that kind of thing. Has anyone else got anything else want to ask? Anybody yet? So we put it on a further agenda. Any other people wanting to speak? No, Peter, no, not desperate to speak today. No. Okay, so we'll move on to apologies for absence.
Apologies for absence from councillor Mark Jones and councillor Sean Waddeker. And councillor Moore as well, just received.
Okay. So now we're moving on to the disclosure of councillors' interests and any matters in relation to the code of conduct. So I'm going to look from my left to my right to just to see if anyone could look at me if they've got any, anything to disclose. No. Oh, so. So do you want us to look at it when we get to that item or?
No.
No.
We need to declare it one way or another, John, now, so rather than wait to the item to see how it goes. It's good, the reason for not being, not sitting in on the agenda items if you think you've got pecuniary interest in that particular item. And it's only you can be the judge of that.
No. No. So you're all right. Yeah, so that's nobody. That's great. Okay, can we seek approval for the minutes from the meeting on the length of October? Anyone have anything to say? Maybe adopt seconded, anyone? Seconded by councillor Chadwick. All in favour? Thank you. Now we have item four, to answer any questions received with standing orders upon which formal notice has been given.
I've received no questions.
It's truly good. So now we're moving on to item five, which is the Climate Change Partnership Panel Working Group. There's some minutes at the meeting there. Has anyone got any questions or anything they want to say about that particular meeting? It was a good meeting. Got some very useful information from particularly from the Marches School about working further together with them on their eco-school status and whether we can sort of work with them. Any, anyone else, any comments on that? No? So a move that we accept that from over there from Jonathan. Seconded by councillor Ishwood. All in favour? Yeah. Okay, so now we have the Oswald Street Town Charities', appointments of nominative trustees. I think it's just one councillor trustee that we're looking for to fill, there's one vacancy. And we have a proposal for councillor Stackhouse. Oh, sorry, councillor Kerr.
Going to propose councillor Stackhouse as she is the local councillor for the area in which the Smells Arms Houses are actually positioned. So we're seeing evidently sensible that she becomes the third nominative representative. It's called the Oswald Street Town Charities, I mean, to confuse into people. I think it ought to be called by its two names. They are two major charities, the Smells Arms House Charity and the Richard Wychely Arms Charity. The Oswald Street Town Charity is not, it doesn't exist, but it's used as a covering term. But I've just asked the clerk to avoid referring to in the future because it has caused confusion by people who have gone to the Charity Commission's website to look up the Oswald Street Town Charities and found there isn't such a thing.
Okay, I'm happy to second that. Have we got any other nominations for the Elms House Charity? Nope. Nope. You don't want to? No. Okay, maybe next year, next time it comes up. So can we vote in favour of councillor Stackhouse? Okay, thank you. So. There. Future Oswald Street Group councillor Ishwood has had to stand down because of his new, new intense work commitments. Sorry, councillor Kerr.
As you're probably aware, the representatives on this are from the Shropshire Council are Chris Schofield and Margaret Macy, representatives have been myself and Mike Ishwood. I think the substitute for that is Jay. As Mike is standing down, I'd like to propose yourself as mayor. Councillor Lewis becomes the other representative on the town council.
I'm happy to do that if there aren't any other nominations. And I think councillor Moore's happy to stay as deputy. Second. Would you like to vote on? Are there any other nominations? No. Can we vote on myself joining the future Oswald Street Group? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, and now we're on to the CCTV memorandum of understanding. And I don't know if the clerk wants to sort of explain to us the issues of this because I know that the CCTV volunteers weren't awfully happy.
Yeah, I think the town council prides itself on the support it gives to the CCTV. In Oswald Street, it's an award-winning scheme. It's supported by volunteers and the town council invests a significant amount of money in it as well. I think the suggestion is that the access to the police radio goes and then that volunteers will, will need to phone 999 to report things as a, as a member of public, even though they're watching things on the, on the screen. I think the biggest issue for us is that we haven't been consulted on it at all. The proposal's been brought in for whatever reason without any explanation. We're able through our scheme and through contact with the police, be able to be really responsive and support the police locally, except for example, dealing with shoplifters. You know, there's a real time instances that, that having real time information helps. So it's, it's very difficult to change the policy, but it's been in place. But I wonder if council would be willing to write a letter to the Police and Crime Commissioner, perhaps expressing its disappointment, disappointment that I haven't been consulted directly. I want some reassurances that, that the changes will be reviewed and, you know, recognising the support that, that the volunteers give.
People who want to speak, but mentioning the shoplifting is very important because there've been lots of feedback from the public lately in shops saying that they feel that they've given up on reporting it to the police because they're just not getting, not getting the action. So I think, I think that's important. But they are going to review it over a period of the first six months, aren't they? So they will look into it. So I had councillor Maguire first.
I just obviously second what the clerk has just said and I think he should be writing a letter. There's a couple of points I've read, reading through on appendix A where it says, course, 999 should be restricted to the following, for the following reasons, a serious offence in progress. But it goes on to say, but my concern is where it says ring 101. 101 should be used to report any incidents that they believe the police attendance to be required. Now, for anybody in this room that has ever run 11, 101 will know, yeah, will know that you're on hold before you get a call answered for a considerable amount of the time. And at that point then, it gets put through to another area. And at that point then, you may get somebody that comes, by which time the offender has left the premises and probably left the town by this point. So I just think that that is just way out of the question. It should be that we, and there's also as well where it says about the radios. So just two points I want to make, that's all. If an accident, if you're stopping radios to be reported straight to the police officer that's on the street, that officer is nearby, that officer would be there within seconds or minutes, hopefully, if they're in the area. But to be able to ring to somebody else will only prolong that time to come. We shouldn't be taking away that, that defence, I suppose you could say, that these shopkeepers have by stopping radio reporting directly, if you like.
I was actually going to make the same comments as councillor Maguire and formally proposed we write to the police service about this for the reasons he's given that if the, by phoning 999 or 101, it only prolongs the agony of reporting an incident which you are watching with your own eyes. But I also feel it devalues the importance of the service. This is a service that we're supposed, that is supposed to be the eyes on the ground where physical officers can't be. So if we're being clumped, if they're being clumped in the same category as any regular civilian who is reporting it as is their civic duty, then, then what's, then what's the point in having this, this service altogether? It's, it's, it needs, it needs to be looked at. And most importantly, why we as a town have been shown the disrespect of not being included in the consultation or being spoken to originally?
John.
I think a remarkable statement, this, isn't it? First, we're last to know, but I think that we haven't actually had a review of the operations centre in the police station for quite some time. So I'm actually keen at this stage to find out how many volunteers they have. Can it be manned? Or are they just saying we're redirecting it because it can't be manned? Does that make sense?
I don't think they're querying whether we're personing the station or not. No, they're just saying that they're no longer willing to take the calls directly from those people.
Either way, we haven't had an update of the police station for such a long time after so many assurances and our partnership with the police. So I think that's a question that we can ask, we have every right to ask. And basically, I would word a strong letter saying that if you have minimal signal, as it's black spots all over Oswald Street, are you really going to leg it round the corner to find the signal where you? I think it's appalling, absolutely disgusting.
Just going to say, it actually says under the evaluation that a report will be done every month for the first six months.
Yeah.
With agreed parties. Are we one of those agreed parties? And, and if not, why not? If we're putting money into the service, why aren't we? And how will they be measured against what? Against last month, six months ago, or crime in the town going up? So how will the evaluation be marked, measured month on, month on?
Okay. And councillor Chadwick in a second. Also, as well as your letter, we've got the police partnership next week, haven't we? So we can, we can sort of attack on both fronts. It's councillor Chadwick.
Right. And actually, I think this is quite a telling statement in regards to the state of the police service in, in the town. And perhaps the reason why if they're withdrawing the radio access is because actually they can't respond to the live incidents that are going on. They, they don't have the boots on the ground to be able to do this. And so it has to go through a central portal. So it's only right with any business, any service, that they have a review of how their processes work, which is clear what they're, what they're doing here. And I agree, we do need to be consulted. As I say, we're, you know, we're one of the partners, we, you know, financially support it. But ultimately, it, there's a business and, you know, and a service that they need to, that they need to review periodically, which clearly doesn't work in our town. You know, the people are already saying that they don't want to report incidents because the police don't respond. Well, it's because they're not here. So what is the point of having radios in a CCTV office if nobody can come anyway? So, yeah, I just think it's just a bit of a telling statement, actually, this, this kind of.
I've got councillor Radford, a councillor Ishwood, and I can see councillor Maguire again. But could you be very quick as we're nearly going around the whole lot second time?
Just two points for my, for me is assuming that although they aren't able to ring the police, that the police are happy to ring them in an emergency if they need to find out information. So it seems unfair that that is not a two-way communication process for a start. And secondly, I'd like to know a bit more about whether CCTV are allowed to directly contact the Rangers and the Rangers then contact the police, whether that's a middle person almost to triage a situation or to help on the ground. If bid and the West Mercia Police Force are working in partnership together for these Rangers, then where do the communication channels work? You know, yes, we may not be able to have police, but if we've got Rangers on the ground, then are they the ones? It's not clear.
Okay. Mark's writing very fast now. Councillor Ishwood.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that, you know, we have to work in partnership with the police and they are ultimately responsible for how they, how they run their operations. But, you know, to be told this sort of secondhand, it, it feels definitely like a downgrade in communications that could, could affect responsiveness to incidents that are happening live. I think that this could have been tackled if there is a problem with the use of the radio by extra training for the CCTV operators as a first, a first try. Because it is supposed to be a partnership. You know, the CCTV operators are not just members of the public. They have expertise and skills that the police actually should be trying to harness much as possible. And I just worry that it could work both ways, that not only are they less able to contact the police and inform them of things that are happening on the ground, but they, the CCTV operators themselves may be less prepared for things that are happening and less aware that what they're seeing on the screen could be related to incidents that they've picked up on from what the police are talking about on the radio. So, you know, I think this is, this is, this will be really detrimental to the service that they can offer. And, yeah, to, to not be consulted until this stage is pretty, pretty poor.
Thank you. Councillor Maguire, one quick.
Councillor Radford has just asked a question to what I was going to ask about the radios for the Rangers.
Thank you. Thank you. So you've got what you need, car, Aaron? Cloakhead.
Yes. And it shows the value of bringing items like this to council on a lot of issues that I hadn't considered. So, so thank you. It'll make for a lengthy and strongly worded letter.
Okay, now we're going on to dog fowling. And we've obviously got our own campaign that we've been trying to approve dog fowling in the area. But this is a consultation that's live now. Are you looking for the council to just reply as councillors or trying to encourage that or something else the council as a whole?
Obviously, you are a consultancy. This, this is a priority for you. And I think, I think councillors can respond individually. However, I do think a council, a council stance on this would be, would be useful. From, obviously, from, from an officer's perspective. It's important that we, we support you and deliver your priorities. And that means working in partnership with Shropshire Council. If this is implemented, you might have views on this as well. So it's an opportunity for a bit of, bit of everything in it.
So have councillor Kerr, then councillor Maguire.
Generally, I would suggest we propose that we respond welcoming it, but asking whether the Shropshire Council would consider agency arrangements so that our staff potentially could consider whether they could have powers to initial fines as well. Because the reality is, I think, there's about three people in Shropshire Council who actually do dog fowling across the whole of the county. So the chance of them being in Oswald Street on any one day are pretty remote. And that's when the problems start. So my proposal is that we welcome it. It's obviously good that they use all the legislations available to them. They ask what are the proposals to actually offer councils' agency arrangements. There'd obviously be a discussion about that and maybe some funding for councils to do that function. But anyway, yeah, what are the proposals for Shropshire Council to offer that to town councils?
Councillor Maguire.
Just to say, I commend the idea as well, as you know, since obviously becoming a councillor was one of my, one of my fights in the beginning. And I know people don't like talking about it, but I also don't like stepping in it. And no, there's, nor does anybody else. I've seen a lot of activity on social media as well, asking questions about it. So I think Shropshire Council need to be a bit more specific on some of their, on what they're, what they're, what they say they're going to put into place. For instance, they're on about dogs being on a lead. Well, some people saying, well, it's got nothing to do with dog fowling. Well, it does, because if a dog is off a lead and walking ahead of a person, then that dog might not be seen to be doing that dog fowling. So people need to be clear, you know, to make clear on that. But also, as, as a father of a child that has not, this year alone, been bitten by a dog that was off of a lead, there is absolutely good reason for a dog to need to be on a lead. Because if a dog is not in control by its owner, then it should be on the, you know, it should be on the lead. So it does need, a lot, a lot of things need highlighting. But also, one of the things I would say as well is from somebody that's been asking for dog fowling bins to be put in areas. I was told that they will not be issuing dog bins in areas anymore, we're to use a normal waste bins.
Yeah.
Well, surely if this comes into force, it needs to be more bins available specific for dog fowling. You gave us quotes not so long ago on how many tonnes of dog fowls, fowling is discarded every year. It can't all be put in, it can't be just put into one bin, it's got to be separate.
Did you want to say something, Aaron?
Yeah, I think just following up, following on from discussion with the, at the place actually, in that we were reluctant to report instances. It's really important that the public, you encourage the public to report things, whether Fix My Street or even using our, our own app, because the information is the key. And, and I think that's where our role is in that if it's shared intelligence, we can actually, we can put posters up, we can put facilities up. And that's how I, I say, so I wonder if councillors would be okay if I added, we would welcome an opportunity to work in partnership, share information to enable us to take a, perhaps a slightly different route.
Yep, councillor Ishwood.
Yeah, that was exactly what I was going to say. I was going to second councillor Kerr's suggestion of, of the response. And yes, suggesting that we ask for the opportunity to work in partnership as much as possible to, to tackle this, you know, jointly together with all our resources.
I think people still don't know about Fix My Street as well. I mean, it's quite a nice, councillor Owen will be next. It's, I found that it's very effective, but, and it's easy to remember once you know it. But lots of people still haven't heard about it. So it might be that we should try and, you know, push that campaign as well for things.
I think there probably is. But I think we could also put a bit of a feature on our next newsletter as well.
Yep. Councillor Owen.
Thank you. I'm just querying the one prohibition that is allowing dogs to foul in the area that these actions do take place. As I believe you can't really not allow your, if you're taking your dog into a field, into a park, you can't exactly drag it out as soon as it wants to go to the toilet. That's going to cause more of the problem. And therefore, is the act really just banning dogs from those areas that you put them into? So I just wanted to sort of pass that along as. It's the first prohibition that, it says the prohibition relates to, it's the very first one.
Got that.
Yep. Allowing dogs to foul in the public area. And then it says failure to a proper, so there's a little bit of that.
They're connected together, really, you should be, yeah. Sorry, I had councillor Milner first.
Just a quick one. Reports like this give, it sounds to give old dog owners a bad name and must, we must, you know, reiterate really that it's only the 1% that are bringing reports to this. But I'm very surprised that this report hasn't come to us and everything's been put in place before the darker nights have started.
Yeah.
Because we all know what happens in the darker nights. This should have been brought to us really in May, April, May, June. So everything's in place for the darker nights.
Yep.
But it is just the 1%, 99% of dog owners.
It is a small percentage of dog owners, you're right. Yeah. Councillor Chadwick.
Just a quick note, just going on from councillor Milner's that, actually, that the consultation started on this on the 26th of October. This plan would have been put in place months ago. So if they wanted to work in partnership with us, why wouldn't we inform earlier? Where we could have been informing people of an upcoming consultation, where we could have been actively promoting it to the public in a much more timely manner. And instead, we're firefighting yet again halfway through a consultation period. So now they're only going to get half the amount of data. So it just seems ridiculous that we're only told things or it only comes to us with like a few days or a week left on a consultation process. It just seems ridiculous.
That worth noting, mentioning.
Yeah, consultation with town parish councils is a, you know, is a significant concern for all of us. And, you know, we're not factored into, into that whatsoever. And I would say we have been trying to liaise with Shropshire Council since the moment you, you, you brought this forward. So, you know, I can't say any more than that.
Councillor Kerr.
On to the issue from councillor Owen range about allowing to foul. Unfortunately or fortunately, that is the wording of the legislation in the same way of allowing to litter. The reason it's worded that way is if you didn't word it that way, you'd have to say not clearing up after your dog within, and there'd have to be a time period and there'd have to be what clearing up means. It may mean a whole of it, it may mean half of it, bit of it. And so obviously, those who are writing the law have gone for the clearest thing, which is allowing your dog to foul. Anybody who clears it up is clearly not going to be prosecuted. But that is where you get the strongest conviction. People use any loophole they can to get around the law. You've seen that with speeding, you've seen that on all sorts of things. So sometimes you just have to accept that common sense will prevail. No magistrate is ever going to find somebody if they picked up a dog fowling immediately. So it just has to be common sense about these things. That's how the law is written. It's not that the Shropshire Council can't rewrite the law to suit themselves.
Okay, so we've got, you're going to write a response from the council then. Hopefully, if we all try and respond as well as individual councillors to go on, go on the website and respond to the consultation ourselves, that would be stronger as well. Okay. So we have a report from the Oswald Street Community Games and along with it, obviously, it was a really great event. They're asking to be able to use the park again next year. Any comments with that? Happy to do it. Oh, Paul, councillor Milner.
Yeah, I think really that the event calendar in Oswald Street wouldn't be the same without the community games now and where it started going back some years now.
Yeah.
I would like to pose that we agree to the recommendations, really, give them the park free of charge and obviously work with David Clough to bring in enough success.
Because in general, I know councils now looking at making some charges for some events in the park. But I think this one is just such a big success for the community. It's been, we'd like to do, I think we'd probably like, so I'd like to second councillor Milner there. Do we want to vote on that?
Would you also like a short note going to the organisers to congratulate them because they have.
Absolutely.
They have, there has a slight change in management there. So just congratulate them on the success.
Very well.
We did have one or two discussions early on, didn't we, as well, if members recall? So yeah, it'd be nice to congratulate.
Yes, yeah. All in favour of those things? Yeah, thank you. Yes, one abstention from councillor Upton. Okay, so now we're on to the improvements to the bus shelter. Very good report from Corrie, thank you. Do you want to talk us to that?
No, I think it's been a long time coming, especially the adoption of Blackgate, the Bus Shelter on Blackgate Street's council submitted a notice of motion, agreed to that quite some time ago. So that's pleasing because it is a heavily used bus shelter. And I know councillor Upton and councillor Castin wanted to bring it forward again. But the day your email arrived, Shropshire Council agreed that we could adopt it. So that, yeah, so that's good. I think the recommendation is, do you just want to do that one? Or do you want to look at doing the one by the post office as well to note the costs? And whether you're happy to delegate responsibility to us to get on with it, or whether you want a report coming back in more detail.
I'll go to councillor Kerr. I mean, I'd be happy to look at those two because they're right in the town centre and they're both very well used. And the only thing I'd say about the particular design is if we delegate to you, we do, I think, we'd obviously like to go for the cedem cover. I think although we vote on that, I have had a few people contact me because they knew this was coming on the agenda. And it was about the actual level of shelter. As to, I know we might have been restricted in what we did on Church Street because it stopped the awnings coming down. But they were hoping that would be one that would give a little bit more shelter to people actually from the rain, a slightly different design. So I had councillor Kerr, councillor Upton.
Very similar. I was going to propose that we actually go ahead with the two hours in the town centre, which is the one opposite all on Blackgate and the one by the post office. I don't think a living wall is appropriate for those particular locations. I think the cedem roof is appropriate. I do think we need to look at the sizing. I'm told that actually, yeah, there's quite a number of people particularly use the one on Blackgate. So we need to make sure we get its size appropriate. There is space there to do it. I appreciate there wasn't on Church Street. I think we need to prove, push out these quite quickly. So I'm all in favour of giving you the authority to get on with it. I'm trying to think, is there anything else you need us to make a decision on? Because I'd rather clear the decks now so we can just get on and get those replaced. And then we need to think about the other ones, I think, you know, on a longer programme. But I think there is two. We've tried to make a real issue of improving bus services in the town. We provide free bus services, we know, on Saturdays. But the service is let down, both by the bus station, in my opinion, and we've, you know, we've been at Shropshire Council on that on a number of occasions and also on the bus stops as well. I won't talk about the bus service because John would have to leave, wouldn't he?
I'd like to second that, but I want to speak, councillor Maguire also wants to speak. But whilst we're talking about the bus station and bus shelters generally, again, I went to the sort of site loss group recently and there was a lot of issues with how the county, how Shropshire Council is dealing with upgrading the bus station. I wonder whether we could just talk to them about that because there's, you know, they're taking down the canopies, but they've left broken glass everywhere. And these people who can't see, don't know that's happening, you're sort of trying to get around to the buses. They've been traipsely through. Yep. Yeah. Yes, it's, yes. So, yeah, so perhaps we should just talk to them about that as well.
Yeah, and this is one of the benefits of the future Ossistry Group is that representatives on that group need to be, you know, flagging it up. As councillor Kerr knows that we, this wouldn't know that we did. You know, the council did offer to fund the repairs, didn't they?
Sorry, I had councillor Maguire then councillor Upton.
Yeah. I was reading about this and I was quite surprised to see the cost of removing the bus shelter at £3,240. Now, those that were in the meeting during, I think it was the youth partnership panel, will probably remember a discussion taking place over having areas for children to be able to congregate, couldn't speak then, congregates, which would allow, excuse my wording, I can't remember what they're called now. You know, the people that go out and see if children are okay, trying to keep them out of youth areas. Thank you very much. That helped me massively. They asked, we have shelters like this put up in Ossistry so that these children can congregate in this area. So they knew where they were, they could go and speak to them, help them out and so on and so forth. Well, surely this type of cost could be reduced somewhat if we used these old bus shelters in this, for this usage in areas. So would that save the taxpayers some money as well at them sort of cost? And my other question is why we're on about buses and bus shelters? While we're on about, yeah, yeah.
Let it left, it's left it off.
Councillor Price left the room.
Just in case, I suppose. Obviously, we as a council are really behind our bus services. And by doing this, what we're talking about today only hopefully increases the use of the buses if we've got good bus stops and covered up, et cetera. One of the issues in our, in Ossistry is since Covid, we lost the 401. Now, I was wondering whether the town council could look at supporting getting back the 401 service in some sort of way. When it was under Shropshire Council, it was not subsidised, it was not subsidised service. So obviously the town council would need to look into subsidising it. It's a service that is very well used and it's a service that people have come to me saying, why haven't we got it since Covid? Could we get it back? So could the council look at perhaps that extra service going forward as well?
Yeah, I'm going to ask the clerk to speak because we've had a lot of problems dealing, trying to extend our free bus service, dealing with them. He can explain.
Yeah, just to say that there has been ongoing conversations with the provider and with Shropshire Council, so the current provider, to see if the town centre routes could be reconfigured to pick up that 401 service. If recognised a big gap in town and also with the new developments down on Eastern Ossistry and that whole gateway is not served by the bus service at all. So we're in dialogue outside our control a little bit. I need to, you know, I've been tasked with bringing a report forward. I'm just not at the point where I've got any information to to highlight any potential costs. So it is work in progress. We are working with councillors to try and address it along a long list of other things as well.
So I'm going to go to councillor Upton, but there was one thing in the report that mentioned the cost of wifi. But can't they pick up the town wifi from all of these bus stops, you know, the bid wifi? So should already be able to pick up wifi. There shouldn't be a risk of not having that. But councillor Maguire, can we look into how we could salvage the old one? I mean, would we need planning permission if we put it up somewhere else? Like a shelter near the central, something?
Yeah, you would have to get consent of the landowner to put it up. So you can't, you know, you haven't got, you're not a big landowner in the town. And if it goes on the highway, you'd need consent of the highways authority. So, but salvaging it is a good idea. You know, we could keep, we could keep, we could store it somewhere and we couldn't wait.
And people congregate on the steps by the market and it's really narrow. So bus shelter is probably fine. Sorry, can I, I did have councillor Upton, then Ishwood, then Chadwick, then Kerr.
Thank you. So, it appears the consensus is to support the, it appears the consensus is to support both the Blackgate and Post Office. But as one of the councillors that was going to propose it, I would suggest we do go ahead with that as well. Because aside from the bus station, which is a separate, which is sort of along the same line, but it's a separate matter. It's, it is the first point of contact for a lot of people that are either coming from the housing estates or from outside of Ossistry. Some of the routes don't use the bus station. They'll either use the Blackgate or they will use Willow Street, depending on which direction they're coming from. So it is, and actually they are also the two main stops that are free service on a Saturday user. So if we are providing an excellent service on a Saturday, then surely we would need the infrastructure at the drop off point and pickup point to match the superior standard that the bus provides itself. So I would suggest we go ahead with that. And with regards to 401, that's a completely different matter altogether if we aren't to discuss it. But I could talk about this all evening.
Aaron's on to that thing. So sorry, councillor Ishwood?
Yeah, it was just going to highlight again the cost of removal and disposal and just say, is there not a scrappage? You know, I don't see why it should cost us over £3,000 to get rid of something that might actually have scrap value. It just seems, it just seems completely backwards. I just don't understand that cost. So.
So just clarity, that is the cost of taking it out the ground as well. So there are, and that, you know, this is based on a, you know, wasn't our project and obviously we'll get quotations. But to give you a reason I provided these prices isn't for detailed analysis of them. It's just to give you an idea of the rough costs and the implications. That's all. We will get quotations.
And I was just going to suggest that if we're looking at trying to save costs on the scrappage and things and that it ends up that we are not able to cite them somewhere else because of land use and things, that we might be able to approach the ironworks for them to repurpose the metal. Because they're always looking for sources of materials and things for ongoing projects. Just think we could utilise a local business and get them to kind of, yeah, make use of the metal that we don't need.
That sounds good too. Councillor Kerr, do you still want to say something?
In a response to councillor Maguire, I think we've got another item on the agenda where Shropshire Council, who take the lion's share of the council tax, is coming to the Ossistry Town Council to, at my new bar to the council tax and saying, fund our services. I think before we consider funding any service, which is a statutory responsibility of Shropshire Council, the least you can do is to contact the Shropshire councillors for your area, Chris Schofield, and ask him to raise it as a motion to Shropshire Council if needs be. Because, you know, it's their responsibility. I'm one, happy to help if they're having problems. But I'm not going to start funding for Ossistry Town Council Precept, Shropshire Council Services. Because then our residents will be paying twice, because they'll be paying for all the bus services everywhere else through their Shropshire Council Precept. And they'll be paying in Ossistry Town Council additionally again to have a decent bus service, which is their right as residents. So it's always to be a bit confrontational, but I do think we need to take those matters to our elected representatives for Shropshire Council. In this case, because John's obviously got an interest, that would be Chris Schofield, and ask him to report back to us. And I wish him fair speed.
Okay, so we had the motion to go ahead with those two bus shelters. I seconded that. Can we all vote whether we want to go ahead with those two bus shelters? But you're going to bring, you'll bring it back before we're delegating to you to.
Yeah, so let's just get it right. So looking for two, replacing both bus shelters outside the post office and the one at Blackgate Street. We're going to put cedem roof on them. I will obviously have to get three coats as per financial regs. But the key piece of feedback is that they need to provide adequate cover. So I will obviously need to make sure but I'll need to make sure that that's the case. If I need to bring it back, I will. Otherwise, I'll just get on with it.
Yep, okay. So councillor Castin, you had something. Did you have something?
I travel on the bus and it is very popular, as everybody said. But it is used by kids coming at school, elderly people, like all the population. And the biggest problem there is cover and seats. There is no, currently there's no seating. And a lot of people use it, usually the bus is full from Ossistry to Salisbury. And people, the kids sit in car parks on curbs, which can be very dangerous. And the last time I got the bus, there were two elderly people that fell over because they waited two hours for a bus. Not that, you know, but seated is highly important. They're not just a few seats.
Shelter and seating, so we'll have a look at better shelters. So shall we get John back in? Have we finished our thing? Did we actually vote?
Well, so Henry's doing this, his clerk's training, so he said, have you voted?
All right, no, have we voted? No. So shall we vote? Did we vote on that? No. Here we go. Let's all vote on the two. Go for head of the two. That's everybody. Yeah. You lose track when you. Well, there's John. Okay, so we had a report again from Corrie about the Community Wellbeing Day, which went really well. I was there all day, very well attended. I think this is a suggestion, we might do something similar at some time in the future, but maybe we can link it into one of our future town meetings as an action from. Because what we want to do is when we have our town community meetings, we want to then action from them and do something to build on what we've discovered people need. And then she's also mentioning the next meeting, town meeting, which we're hoping everyone will come to on November the.
It's on November the 28th. Again, Hope Church, it's proven to be a good facility, a good venue to host events. It's large and it's, you know, next to.
It is, and I'm hoping, I mean, we did get quite good turnout at the last one, but I'm hoping to get quite a good one with this. And it's nice for councillors to be there with the group of the public and just, you know, be part of it. It's worked really well, really. You went to the last one, didn't you? Yes, yeah, yeah, very good. So, you know, it is worth giving it a go if you haven't been to one. Okay, now I think we're on to the risk register. Would you like to say anything about that?
No, I think it's just in, doing a risk register is an important part of the council's governance arrangements. We've had our draft audit reports and it just, like, are well. The council is run, I would say that, wouldn't I? But in terms of, you know, recommendations around governance and risk management, there are very few. I've reviewed the risk register. There are some changes on there that inevitably one or two things that we will have missed. If we have, this is a living, this is a living document. Councillors want to feed that back to me. I'm, you know, happy to include them.
Did you want to say something? Go on.
I think there's one risk which we're not adequately addressing, which is risk number 44. It says equality legislation on service portfolio on starving structure. I've been concerned for some time that we aren't undertaking quality impact assessments, both routinely on new items of policy, but also systematically across the council services. This is down as a tolerable risk. I think it's hard enough. I think until we are actually got a program of doing proper equality impact assessments and resource those effectively, if somebody did ever challenge us, we haven't got a leg to stand on because we haven't done an impact assessment. So it's very difficult to prove that you've acted without discriminating to those who have got protected characteristics if you've never actually sat down and thought about them. So I think it's probably more than tolerable. It's probably quite a high risk at the moment until we've got a systematic approach to this. Shropshire Council do have such an approach. I don't quite understand why we haven't, but we haven't. And I would ask as a matter of urgency, that is now sorted out.
Do you want to respond to that, Aaron, or no?
Not a great deal. I can add to that. The council, you know, has an equality policy. That councillor Kerr is quite right. You need to consider the impact of what you do. And if I bring forward a paper just setting up how we propose to do that, it would be, you know, consideration of the reports and referencing there. You will, you will need and probably should do more consultation with the public. Similar to how we did with the toilets. But yeah, I'll bring forward a report.
Is that something your Equalities Group should look at or you're just going to bring it straight to council?
I can bring a paper setting up legislative requirements and you can perhaps task the Equalities Group with doing something specific.
Yeah.
And item 26, I think we can delete that one. That's the public bonfire. And I think following a very successful event we had last week, which I think, you know, with the feedback I've had, in spite of the weather, was a tremendously successful event. So my credit and praise to everybody involved in it. But I think as a risk, it is now no longer an entry actually. I think it's just become another event. If we run it, let's deal alongside all of our events, which are extremely well managed and extremely successful.
So I'll second that. Do we want to vote to go ahead with that? Pretty. Thank you. Okay, so we have a report from the operations manager on, first one is on street lighting, where we do have to make a decision. Henry, do you want to talk to us about that? No, Aaron's going to talk to us about it.
Yeah, we've been kicking this one around for a while. I think that there. Yeah, we've been, we've been kicking this one around for, for, for a while. Um, I think that there, there are a few options for you to consider here. And there's some significant, significant financial implications of the different options as well. Um, ranging from option two, which is, you know, the, the lower cost option, which is to just replace the LED streetlights. Uh, to a full contract of, you know, estimated over six hundred thousand pounds to replace every street, streets. Every, sorry, been a long day. Um, replace the columns as well as the LED lights. The columns are an expensive thing to change. Um, we have been doing them as and when we see failure. Uh, they are regularly inspected. And, you know, that would be our preferred route rather than a, a, a large contract. Um, but this is for you to discuss. You do need to be mindful of financial impact of the decisions you're making now. The windfall. Uh, money is not, um, bottomless. There are, you know, a number of big projects you want to see and you need to decide where this sits on that lesser priorities.
Anyone want to speak about the lights? Uh, I have councillor Davis.
Yeah, I've looked through this. Um, my option would be option two. Um, the reason I say that, we've got just round about two hundred lamps in Whittington. Um, one or two mounted brackets, which were not really a problem, uh, quite a few concrete columns. Um, but a number of, um, steel columns. So we changed all the LEDs to start with. Um, and on the concrete columns, we put a sleeve on them where we could. And we had a risk assessment done on them and they were numbered from one to five. So fours and the fives were the worst. We've now done all the LED change and now we're going, picking up the, the more dangerous concrete columns. But by changing the lamps first, our bill was to Shropshire Council for electric was somewhere around seven, eight thousand pound an annum. Since we put the LEDs in, we're down to under two thousand. So there's huge savings. Okay, the capital project was about seventy thousand, but there's huge savings on getting the lights done. Um, so my recommendation would be get the lights done, then reassess. The council leave a column, we'll come back to us and tell us what columns we're doing next.
Okay, so councillor McGuire, then councillor Ishwood, then, um, councillor Coburn.
I would just second what, um, councillor Davis has just said. I was going to say something similar. Obviously with, the, the more you do, the more you save. Yeah, there's an outgoing to begin with, but the long term, there is a, a huge saving to be made to us and to the taxpayer. Because the taxpayer at the end of the day is paying for the energy used on the, on the lights. I would also like to say that, you know, that the ones I've been reporting that have been out and have been replaced. They're getting replaced very quickly and they are being replaced with LED. So we should be seeing a, a drop in our um, annual costs already by the amount that have been replaced. And they are, they do seem very good. The sleeve ones, there's quite a lot of sleeve ones I've seen kicking around that the Shropshire Council have been putting over the top. I presume it's Shropshire Council that have been doing that. Um, it would bring the cost down. So yeah, I'd support it too. Second option.
Ishwood.
Yeah, I think I support option two. Um, I don't think there's any, any desire to, to go, you know, any further than that at this moment, but I'm just astounded at the cost of the, um, getting the permit. So you have to get an individual permit per light, basically. And that's even if we, is that for changing the column or just for changing the, the light fitting?
The column.
So if we don't change the columns, then that money's saved. Okay. Um, because that seems, you know, really weird that you can't do a kind of scheme permit. Um, but yeah, so, so yeah, that, that's, that's one of the main reasons I think we should probably go with option two at this point.
Councillor Davis again.
Yeah, um, there is, well, Shropshire Council have been kind in some locations and done a scheme permit. So if you've got a number of lamps in a road, they've let you have the road or a section of the road on one permit rather than a permit for individuals. But again, it's nothing written in stone. It's up to how you talk to them and get them on board. And I guess, you know, a nicer feeling on the day. But there is, we have had that option.
Um, how much do we save by, if we do have to replace the concrete columns and they're replaced with steel, are they nice steel ones or are they horrible steel ones?
Well, I, I'm not sure I want to comment on that aesthetic look, but the galvanized steel.
Yes.
The thinner.
Yeah. So they're more attractive really to most people.
I don't know.
Discerned street lamp lover. No. Oh. Yeah. I, I'm just wondering if, if Henry knows if, um, you said that seventy have been identified as being needing to be replaced first. Are there any that we really should be adding on to this? You know, if we're saying we just want to do the lights, but are there like five or ten or something that actually should be?
So, uh, previously in the year, what reports council which identified, uh, twenty five columns that really need to do in council agreed to get those ones done. They've been done. So the ones that were on its last legs have been, have been replaced. Yeah.
Okay. So I think we've generally had proposals that we want to go for option two, which is just replacing the lighting at the moment. So anyone would just second that? Yep, that's a Chadwick. Someone probably already has.
Can I come in just before you go into the vote then? So because as I mentioned earlier, we do have audit reports and they have highlighted the need for us to go out and obtain quotations for our regular day-to-day maintenance as well. So as part of, of recommendations in here, um, we are going to include that as part of specific, specific patients to get quote, quotation, to get some quotations on that just so that we make sure that we're delivering value for money. I, I would say that we're, you know, we provide a good service as well. Um, and we're, we're really happy with, with the level of service we provide in Ossy Street.
Again, just before we vote, councillor Chadwick.
Just gonna say, is there, is there an option, like with the money that we're saving by going with just replacing the LED lights? And obviously that's going to, you know, financially save us a lot of money on our, on the energy bill of being able to allocate that back into a pot to then replace the columns. So rather than we go, wait, we've saved some money is, because we're not, you know, we use that like it's just there, isn't it? Rather than just, just putting it back into, to reduce it, to replacing those columns. So as we, as we get that bill and we go, well, we've saved twenty thousand pound, we can afford to replace two columns. Right. Well, let's go and do those one. We get the, uh, and then get that scheme of work finished along that timeline that you're asking for without it technically costing us any more money because it's money we're already spending.
Yeah. So we, we've considered that to be an EMAC reserve.
Yeah.
So we, we would, um, we could allocate that. Yeah, yeah.
I think that's the last word for. No, you're right. Okay. Let's go to votes. So we're voting to, um, the clerks going to look into who's going to keep doing the maintenance uh, as well as we're going to just go for the replacing order, the bulbs. Going to vote on that? All in favour? Yes, we must. No one against everyone, that is. Do you want to say something?
I'm actually voted.
Okay. You might have something different to say.
You voted. That's it.
Yeah.
That's it.
We're done. Okay. So with the estates report, I rather than take it all at once, we'll just do one thing at a time. Just because sometimes people then start to say, oh, I wanted to talk about the first one. So the cross fountain.
Yeah, I set out in the report, members will be pleased to know that the, uh, insurance company have accepted to pay to, in full to reinstate not only the cross fountain, but also the damaged, uh, concrete in and around the, the stones that it sat on. So the, the footway as well. Um, it's all going to be repaired and replaced as well.
Sounds good. And Crossmarket Hall, Tennessee?
Uh, yeah, so, um, it's now live. Uh, I know the last meeting I said it's going to be, so it definitely is now alive. Um, the estate agent has valued it at twenty five thousand pounds per annum. Um, to date, um, we haven't had any interest to date. Um, but if there is anybody interested in viewing or ranging, um, any more information, they are urged to contact Jonathan Bevan of Bevan's Ossy Street, Bevan's Ossy Street, sorry.
Um, cemetery flooding?
Yeah, with a, with a recent, um, extreme heavy rainfall, um, there've been quite a few complaints coming into council regarding the grounds uh, at the cemetery. Um, I have, uh, yesterday, um, spoke again with representatives from CDS, which is a company that specialises in uh, cemetery grounds, environmental, uh, solutions, et cetera. Um, and we are arranging for them to come up to do a full report. Now, the report that they will carry out will be a ground survey um, of the current layout of the cemetery, but also as well the unused area at the top end as well to make sure, or to ensure that that area is suitable for us to, uh, have burials as well. As well as that, we're asking them to put together a, um, report in terms of how many plots uh, are available in that area as well, so that then we can sort of determine how long, how much longer we've got left uh, at Ossy Street Cemetery. Uh, just one other stat for, for members, to date this calendar year, we've had eighty nine burials, new burials. Um, at Ossy Street Cemetery. So an average of eight point nine per month.
So this, this, the cemetery, the need for, for burial land is, is, is an, is an issue that you raised in the, in the place plan. We need to make sure that, uh, arrangements at Ossy Street are, are fit for purpose for the future. So that's the purpose that we're doing this report. I'm doing it under delegated powers because I think it's, it's about the delivery of a service that we're already providing. Um, the, the cost of the work will be estimated in the region of about eight thousand pounds to give us a full plan. I have talked about it for quite some time, uh, and now I'm pleased that we're, we're, we're getting it done. Um, the issue down there is the grounds are wet, you know, uh, and it has been now for three or four winters. Um, it's not a case of rainwater, it's coming up through the ground. So it's really important that we, we look to find a, a, a solution that also doesn't, um, pollute the neighbouring land.
Thank you. So the next one is the high glass equipment replacement, and this needs a decision. So you have to speak about that.
Yeah, so the, um, one of the main features of the, the playground area of Kigos Park is the netted climbing frame. Uh, we've had, um, annual inspections from our insurance company, from others as well. Um, and the net is, is stuck, the, the ropes are started to fray. Now, um, if it continues, then it's going to be just bare wire rather than anything else. Um, so we have sorted, um, a quote, um, from a supplier, um, who have quoted that to fully repair and replace will cost in the region of thirteen thousand pounds. Um, and that's to physically remove the entire frame from its location. Take it away, fix it, come back and put it back in where it was.
Um, councillor Davis and then councillor McGuire and President Stevens.
I'd like to propose we go ahead with that work. Um, it's fairly busy there with children. See lots climbing on that. Absolutely love it. It needs to be safe. Um, so my proposal would be that we give it to Henry, other clerk to replace it with something equivalent or the same thing.
Are you just, you're seconding. Okay. But councillor McGuire.
Yes, I know you can second it anyway, but I would just, I just want to, do, do we have only one possible quote or do we have to get more than one quote? Just to see if that thirteen thousand is able to be reduced. It is a climbing frame that should be kept, but I'm just asking that question. That's all. I mean, perhaps I should put a buy. I didn't say my kids use it quite regularly, so.
Uh, no, certainly. Yeah, we, we can look to obtain further quotes for that, Erin.
So the quote was coming from a, a, a company we use all the time, who, who know the playground. Uh, but yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get, we'll get a second quote at least.
On the topic of the play equipment, we also, we did have discussion of, and I thought we'd agree that we were going to have a swing for a wheelchair accessible swing. Go on to that one.
So I think there is an agreement in place, but then there's a complexity of the, the decision of the splash, the water park facility. So I think most proposals have been put on hold until, until council reached a, a, a decision on that.
Okay, councillor Curd.
I, I think, um, going back to the comments of the clerk on the water splash facility, we've already received, as members will be aware, a ground condition survey, which has raised some issues. And I think it's probably time to have a slight reset on, on this project. Um, I still think we believe in the concept of a splash facility. I think the location in existing, um, play facility is proving to be problematic. Originally, we're going to put it against the wall, you recall, of the building at the back. We had problems with connecting it onto that wall and potential, um, issues regarding the ownership of that wall. It is an area that we know is a culvert. You'll be aware that we had, um, a little bit of a single overlap culvert earlier in the year. It is a very, um, compact area as well. And, um, you know, I was there just last week, we realised it's very busy, even in the winter period. Um, so the problematic, um, comes of trying to do any works in an area that's very well used. So I am like, I'm proposing um, that we actually instruct the clerk to look for an alternative location elsewhere on the, um, Kigos Park. We will not, um, continue to have that bowling green. I know at the moment anybody suggests that, somebody always comes ringing me up and saying, you're going to put it on the bowling green. So no, I say we keep the bowling green, um, but we look for alternative location. And look, in, based on what we learned from our first tenant experience, we use a non-recirculating system. That's a system that takes water and then we'll put it in a tank of grey water. We site it in such a place that we can access that tank of grey water and use it when watering the flowers and the browsers and the hanging baskets. So effectively we're recycling in the best environmental practice that water, um, that's been used on, on the splash park. And a report backed up on, back to us on that. And I've no idea whether such a site can be found or not, but that will be instructions that we offer to the clerk and ask him to come back to us.
Okay, now a bit later, um, quite soon, it's coming up the project report and I know that, um, staff have a lot of projects on. So Aaron, do you feel you need any help in bringing this forward?
Uh, uh, well, the answer, the answer is yes, because just to look for an alternative location as, as a clerk is, is very difficult. So I will need to bring somebody in to offer some advice and guidance. Um, you know, other, other sites will encounter, uh, similar issues to the ones that we've counted so far. So yeah, if, I'm happy, I'm happy to, to propose alternative locations. Um, I do need some support to do it. So whether that is a, a play provider or, or, or another consultant, not consultant, sorry, uh, some expertise in the area, um, that, then I, then we'd need that and some capacity as well. As members know, sorry, as members know, we've got toilets, English Bros toilets, uh, in transit. We've got other capital programmes, including the centre, Anfield Mansion, which are on LED lighting. So we've got quite a lot of work on. So um, I, I would need some support to, to do that. Exactly what that is, I can't tell you.
Okay. So you'll bring something forward suggesting someone who could give you a certain number of hours to
No.
Move forward.
If this was an instruction and you've got to debate it and, and, and vote on it, um, I, I would, um, speak to, to a couple of companies to see what the alternative locations were and what sort of support we would need um, in order to bring a, a, a report forward.
Hmm.
Obviously I'd have to report that back because there'll be a cost.
Yeah. I mean, a lot of the information we gained from the tendering process and from talking again to the, um, different providers and looking around the country at other areas, it did seem that it's probably like to be cheaper as well to put it in a more open rather than trying to cram it in the back of halfway through a playground. It's probably going to be cheaper to have a more open site. They all seem to be, that seems to be the way forward. And, um, also we want our actual play facility to be really good and have these, um, disabled facilities and to be the best it can in the, in the meantime. We don't want to be disrupted by, um, working on it in the winter. Okay. So I don't know who of you three, put your hands up first. Do you know councillor Chadwick or? Okay. All right. Councillor Chadwick, councillor Davis and then councillor McGuire. Shall we go?
Um, given that this, um, splash park is, is going on for a while now. Um, and we have already agreed that there will be some facilities there for disabled access, in particular the, the wheelchair, um, swing. There is no reason why that cannot be implemented now. It's a fairly cheap, I say cheap in the grander scheme of things. Um, piece of equipment that can be quickly installed into the existing grounds that would have a huge impact. Um, and especially when we've got, you know, coinciding with the changing places. I just think actually can we just get that piece of equipment put in? Um, I'm just thinking about a different location. Is there any way potentially that the crazy golf and the park could swap? I know, I know. Hear me out, hear me out. I'm not saying get rid of it because we al, we already know, we already know that we want to like repaint it and stuff. Like, we know that we want to keep it, but we're saying that the splash park wants to be in a slightly more open space, that actually if we swap them round, then it's technically in the middle of the park and we've got an opportunity to make it a little bit wider. It's just a suggestion.
Yeah, I think if Aaron looks at.
Yeah, I didn't want the wheelchair swing.
Yeah. If, if Aaron looks at the different options, because one of the problems with that area is there's trees, which get, getting in the way. Um, so I did a councillor Davis.
Yeah, um, I'm just a little bit concerned that we're drifting off the agenda. This item was to discuss the climbing frame and now we've drifted into the splash pad and everything else. And I And now we've drifted into the splash pad and everything else. And I think that needs to come back as an agenda item at another meeting.
Well, we can talk about it in the projects, it's on the projects thing. So we can talk about it in a few minutes. So that's what I suggested. Should we do that? Or talk about it? We can continue it in the projects bit.
Yeah, ultimately, sorry to put this on you, ultimately it's down to the chair who decides. You have the power, I have no power in meetings. What I would say, you need to be careful of the length that you're going down. Obviously by deciding, you've had a discussion about the equipment and that's prompted a decision about alternative location. That's quite a big decision. But there has been a motion put forward, has been seconded, has it been seconded? I don't know if it's been seconded.
Seconded, in case no one has.
So it's been seconded. Just have to be careful the level of detail you go into. That's what I say. It is, you know, legitimately it's on the project list, so it can be discussed.
Yes.
But to the right level of detail.
Okay, hold on. So the reason we're bringing that up is because we do want to go ahead with the play equipment as councillor Davies has suggested. Can we, can we first vote on going ahead with the repair of the play equipment? We'll do that first. Do you want, unless you want to talk about that one? Oh, go on then.
Yeah, yeah, that was the first proposal made, wasn't it, to, to accept the recommendation of the report? But I think with your permission councillor Davies, we should amend that to include the swing, the accessible swing along with the climbing frame repairs. Would that be, yeah, just, just to clear that up together? Yeah. So if you're prepared to accept that amendment then.
And to get quotes rather than go for the one vote. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So should we all, are you seconding that then? You're taking.
I guess my amendment needs a second before it can be accepted. Lovely, brilliant.
Okay. Okay, so we'll vote on the motion as amended by councillor Ishwood and councillor Davies. All in favour? Okay, and the splash park bit, go on, go on.
Explain why it's relevant, because we're making decisions about putting equipment on the playground at the moment. We're considering for a splash park. So clearly that would be a waste of time if we're then going to whip it up in a month's time, I'm sorry, in six months' time to start building a splash park. So the two are intrinsically connected. And in order to ensure that we've got the ability to make decisions over replacing the rope on the climbing frame and having a climbing swing, we need to take a suggestion that we actually look elsewhere for the splash pad. The two are intensively connected as part of the same agenda item.
So. John. Yeah.
Yeah, well, I thought that the playground and the swing, which I think is a wonderful idea, would be in like your play proximity, you know, like a playground area.
In the playground, yeah.
Yeah, where a splash park isn't feasible because of the ground level. So we're looking at two different sites, aren't we? We're not looking at one site. Yeah, so I mean, I'm just a bit confused. How we're talking about play equipment and splash park, I mean.
Because we were going to put the splash park in the play area, but if we don't, we can go ahead and put the new extra play equipment instead.
I love the play, but let's go through it.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm losing track again now. We voted to go ahead with play.
Yeah, so if you voted, accepted that recommendation, that will place the climbing frame and buy the accessible swing.
Okay, so now at the same time, we've had a motion to look into a different location, therefore for the play park and to allow the clerk to get some help to help him look at those options.
Yeah, I think, I think that's too broad.
You tell us what the motion is.
Yeah, well, I absolutely can't tell you that. So I think you need to be careful here in terms of are you deciding that, you know, are you deciding that the splash pad isn't going on to the playground? Or are you just asking me to look for alternative sites? I can do that, however, I'll need to bring a report back to highlight the support that we would need to bring that project forward.
Okay, could we prioritise that though? As in sort of high priority thing?
Yeah.
Yes. Voted and.
Well, it's my motion, so I can. My motion was to seek an alternative location for the splash pad. So I think those words speak for themselves. The policy of the council will be to look for an alternative location. Previous policy was to look for, locate a splash pad on the play area. So the new policy will be to look for an alternative location for the splash pad. To ask the clerk to report back to us that to be on the basis of a non-recirculating system with a grey tank that can be accessible to the bousers and for the reuse of that water. And to ensure that when we finish this, there will still be a bowling green. Just to reassure, because I had a lot of people raising comments about bowling green when it was first discussed. Clearly, there will still be a bowling green when it is finished. And that's, that's what the motion seeks to do. And they report that back, not to do it obviously, but to come back to the council and say there's two or three locations or there's one location, there's no location. I don't know, I have to come back to the council at that stage.
I'm happy to second that. I think councillor Maguire wants to say something before we go to vote.
It's just to say, I mean, obviously we spent quite a bit of money on something that's not been able to happen in one location. With the park being such a historical area and we already know that there's a lot of what do you call it? There's an old stream under there somewhere.
Can I raise a point of order, chairman?
Wait.
I can raise a point of order any time. And I think the council's been misled because councillor Maguire asked at the previous council meeting what money has been spent on the splash park? And he was told that no money had been spent on the splash park. Any money being spent is the ground condition survey. That was needed anyway, because as you know, we had a hole appear in the middle of the play park. So I think it is with the press here, very ill considered and ill judged to say that we spent a lot of money on the splash park when you've had the information to the contrary given to you. So I'd ask you to withdraw that remark.
That my point was, before I was interrupted, was we've already spent that money on that area, rightfully so, to find, because we said, we agreed to have that done in that area. And I'm not disputing that. I'm saying, do we have to spend that money again to find another area? And we could run into problems again. I hope that clarifies and you know, what you're trying to say. No, I'm saying that we spent money on the ground survey. It's what we've spent money on.
Yeah.
And we need to spend money again. Oh, I apologise for saying splash park. That's wrong word of using. My word, my point was we spent money on.
Aaron doesn't say anything about that.
We've spent money on trying to find out if that could go in that area. Do we have to spend that money again? To find out if it can go in another area and we could end up in the same problem again. That's my question. I hope that clarifies things.
Yep, yep, thank you. Can I just, go on, Aaron, and then councillor Price? That's surnames now.
Inevitably, I will need to, you know, when I report back an alternative locations, if there are any, I'll need to offer you advice on what you need to do at the next steps. I can't say yes or no, but there'll be additional expenditure. Members know the history so far. It is likely a condition ground survey would be needed, wouldn't it? You know, we've decided you needed one for the existing playground. It's likely that it would be needed for another location.
One thing that puzzles me with this ground service is why we don't already have that so, you know, we're all the drains and the electrics and why in our property we don't actually know where those things are in the first place.
Yeah, good question. Yeah, good question. And we're taking, whereas, you know, you know, you have to remember we're a parish council and not a unitary council, lots of resources, we're limited resources. We've inherited things, but now we're taking steps in place to, to make sure that we know where everything is.
We should know anyway, isn't it? Sorry, councillor Price, did you, Sandra?
Yeah, now everybody stopped arguing. Fully enough, Ollie. I was gonna, I was actually going to ask that question and I think you just hit it spot on. But what we've actually inherited are problems that we didn't know about from the borough council days. And a lot of that paperwork's probably gone missing anyway. But that's what I was going to say.
Well, just if there are some documents we don't know about that we could get from the land registry or something. Sorry, so are we ready to vote on that motion? To give the clerk the ability to look into another location? I second it, I second it, I think. Everybody in favour? Those.
One, two.
Those against? Two? Any abstentions? Three? Okay, so that ties that one up. And now it's section fifteen, which is the Greenways Route Request for match funding from Shropshire Council.
Yeah, I know councillors want to speak on this. I think I've got a view of where they're going on this. Just, just, just to add that Shropshire Council officers were surprised at this request as well when it was discussed at future Ossery Group. As part of the UK Shared Prosperity Fund, you've actually got to have committed the match funding before you put the application in. The application's gone in and now we've been asked for match funding. It may be useful to discuss this item, your position on it anyhow, but I wouldn't necessarily spend a lot of time debating it.
Councillor Chadwick.
I just think it's goddamn cheeky yet again, the Shropshire Council. Yet again, they, they put something in place. They don't want to maintain it. Then when it wants upgrading, they go, can we have some money towards it? And just like the hedges that they wanted us to pay for at the last meeting. I think it's absolutely disgusting, if I'm honest. If they want to improve the cycle network in the town, they might want to extend the existing one and carry out the maintenance to the one that they've already implemented.
Okay, councillor Upton.
Since its inception in two thousand and nine, Shropshire Council, and I'll probably get shot down in flames for this, but their, their lack of representation and mishandling of service has been a disgrace. This only typifies it. They've been, and now they're, after successive years of very unwise investments, i.e. the North West Relief Road and the shopping centres, I think this, this is, this just takes the biscuit and we should not support it.
Okay, any other comments more specific to this particular cycle way or if we we feel, I mean, it wasn't really the highest priority as far as cycling, was it? We thought the Gasworths Bridge seemed more important, but go ahead.
Yeah, I.
Councillor Ishwood.
Yeah, I was just going to say this, this would have been worth considering if it was for a new route, but it's really just for an existing one. Yeah, I'd love the crossings to be put on the road and things like that. I think those should be done regardless. Just for, just for safety of accessing some of the amenities in the area. But, but for a simple upgrade, which won't actually get us anything that we haven't already got, I'm not sure we should, we should support this.
Councillor Kerr then councillor Maguire.
I suggest we actually write to Shropshire Council and say we fully support increasing cycling in the town. Our priorities of investment are number one, to put the bridge that you are just about to put in to make that LTN one twenty compliant, I compliant with your own standards to make sure it's cycle accessible. Number two, then to find a cycle way that actually connects to it, because at the moment there isn't one. You'll have to take your chances on the Shrewsbury Road cycle where it hops from one side of the road to the other before it gives out. And there's no plans at the moment to connect that up to the bridge. Number three, then to resolve Gasworths Bridge, which clearly needs a separate pedestrian and cycle route across, as was down on Middleton Road. If you like, a separate route alongside the road. As it stands, it's highly dangerous to anybody trying to do active transport. And when they've done those three, there are other routes into town long before this particular proposal. So it's not the anti-cycling, quite the reverse. It's one of our priorities. But this is just the lowest priority of all the schemes they could have come up with.
Okay, councillor Maguire, sorry.
Just what councillor Kerr just said then, I totally agree with him. Going on, touching on what you've just said on Middleton Road, that it's not even up to standard. That cycle route that's down Middleton Road, I believe, and if anyone in this room can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it is totally outdated. It's not usable most of the time because people are using it to park on. Because currently under legislations, it states that you can park on a solid within a cycle area that's a solid line, but if it's a staggered line, you cannot. So at the moment, pedestrian, or sorry, other way around, sorry, thank you very much. I knew it was one of them. So currently, if you're on a bike, you can't use that road anyway as a cycle, as a cycle path. So it's inadequate. So it needs, Shropshire Council needs to put it right. Anyway, I've been trying to get them to put that right because I get a lot of complaints of people parking on them, especially on a Saturday. So it needs sorting.
Okay, councillor Price, then I think we'll go to the vote on whether to say no, basically. And write to them.
Well, I've got to echo councillor Maguire's sentiments on that because especially on the days of the running, you know, you can't pedal safely up that road at all. And it's much to be said around that whole area for cycling in Ossery Street. I would suggest that we could put something together as a letter to say, yes, we like what you want. But what we need is that the existing cycle way to be made safe. It's just not a safe for the road.
Yep. So I think councillor Kerr made a list of what we can put in the letter that we write to them, asking for yeah, another Middleton Road, making it. Yeah. Yeah, by that. LT what? Okay, so Aaron will do that, but then we're also voting to say no. Say no to the giving them this money? Yep, all, all those in favour of not giving them that? I think that was, I think that was unanimous. Okay, so we're now on the local council awards scheme report put together by Sandra. Thank you very much. Suggesting that the council starts working towards the local council awards scheme foundation level. Shall we agree to be put forward for that? Yep, anyone? Sorry.
I was just interested what the requirements were for the quality award. And actually, were we selling ourselves short in the first instance? Like, are we, do we have to do the foundation to be able to apply for the quality? Or can we actually hit the markers for the quality that's off?
We're not quite at the standard for qualities. A couple of policies that we need to be written and adopted. We'd like to go through the stages to demonstrate continuous improvement. The biggest gap is the engagement strategy, Sandra, wasn't it? So, you know, we're not, we're not far off, but I'm given, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's really helpful to know.
Yeah, I'm happy to propose that we go ahead with this. I think credit to, credit to the staff for having the ambition to go for it basically and improve, improve the quality of the council that you know, they are actually a part of. So yeah, thank you very much and I fully support this.
I'd second that. Can we all go to the vote? Are we all in favour? We are. That's the Milner's out through. Okay, we're hurtling towards the end of the agenda. Hooray. So the last bit we have is all the projects. So no, it's quite, Aaron's done a very nice table about all the projects with colour coding and it's much clearer. And you can see there's a hell of a lot on there. So has anyone got any questions or queries about any of the projects and?
Yeah, things are moving swiftly. So the English Walls contract, we're just in the final stages of signing that contract. We will be communicating. We will let people know who's won that, who's won that job and who will be carrying out the work. So we've already meshed, really pleased with how that's going. Should mention, we should be owners in the next week or so. We, I know we keep telling you this. But I think just one, one footnote, we've had a laser scandal on the building. And Henry's not a man of, to be naturally enthusiastic about like everything, but he came back and went, wow, that's an amazing piece of work and it's really going to help us with, with the future of that, that building. I am also meeting consultants tomorrow to talk through. I am also meeting consultants tomorrow to talk through a um the business case. So I know members were keen on on having that. My first, my first task in that is to make sure you're fully involved at the very start. So you get a chance to have your say right at the outset. That'll involve a probably a workshop. Um but I I want you involved right at the very start, so, you know, the the consultants know exactly where you're coming from. Uh negotiations on the centre are slow. And yeah, we we talked about extending the free bus scheme earlier, so this is, this is where that discussion's happening. Uh we will provide further reports. We are meeting, we are trying to push it, but it's been very, very difficult. If you can answer any questions apart from that.
Any questions before we go, councillor Kerr, a very short question, please.
Great. Um presumably, I'll put the bus station, the bus stops on the project plan, because that's the next project that's going to go forward. And there's a view on here where we've um sort of finished, like the place plan, and there's no further action. I think they can just be taken off now, can they, if there's no further action?
Thank you.
Things on, we're finished. I know, you can have a separate list of one's projects that have been completed.
Okay, I think that's the end then. Thank you, everyone.